It's 7:30. Are we ready? Okay, we're going to call the Board of Selectmen July 15, 2020, meeting to order. And the first item is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd all stand, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic.
... One nation, one God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item. Michelle and I had to review the minutes from March 18, 2020. We were checking on a particular item. And it had to do with an 824 review that we requested. And when I looked at the minutes, I noted that the vote unanimous motion carried was not included. While the item was identified in the minutes and a motion was made and seconded, there was no recording of the vote unanimous motion carried. So I would ask that there be a motion to approve that minor change in the minutes of March 18, 2020.
So moved.
Thank you, Jim. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Rick Schar. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, thank you. The next item is to accept the agenda as presented. Is there a motion to approve?
Make the motion to accept the agenda as written.
Thank you, Lou Pear. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
I think Jim seconded. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Next is Communications and Correspondence. And I have asked April Graves if she would give a report of the Equity Committee. And I think she is ready. So we'll turn to April Graves. Welcome, April.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I hope everyone's doing well tonight. As Susan said, my name is April Graves, and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Portland Social Justice Coalition. In June 2020, the idea for the coalition formed out of conversations among town residents and town officials in the wake of George Floyd's murder and protests across our nation. Out of a desire to include and connect all groups and people in town who want to address social justice issues in Portland and to continue the momentum of this important response to injustice in our nation and our community, we decided to form a coalition. We felt that the coalition could serve as a network of existing programs working towards social justice and bringing together the new energy of people in our community who wanted to protest all forms of racism across the country and in our town. We envisioned groups and individuals working together to create new initiatives, continue the important dialogue that has been started, and complement the work of existing programs. We saw the coalition as an opportunity to educate and empower community members who are looking for ways to make positive change in our town. Our first act as a coalition was to send a survey to community members who requested to receive information and contribute to the coalition. The survey was sent to approximately 50 people, and we ended up with 36 responses. The survey questions were based on emails and conversations we had with community members about their concerns in regards to racial and equity issues in our town. I sent the survey results to all of you through the email that I had sent Monday. The survey revealed the top concerns for the participants, the racism and bullying in schools, followed closely by discipline disparities between students of color and white students. We were able to find data on the state website, EdSite.
Who's April?
Diversity and equity in town employee positions as there appears to be a lack of diversity amongst town employees. The question that has arisen is whether there have not been diverse candidates or if they are not being hired. Our coalition members would like to thank your board for developing the solidarity proclamation in your work towards racial bias and diversity training for town employees and board members. We look forward to developing a working relationship with you, both Board of Education and Board of Selectmen, to continue the positive work that has already begun towards making Portland a more diverse and equitable community for all.
Thank you. Is there anything that you wanted to add, April? We did lose you for a few of the results of the survey.
Oh, okay.
The part that we did not hear was just prior to where you talked about hiring of town employees. So if you could just maybe repeat the statistics for some of those other items, April?
Okay, so the results of our survey were the top concerns raised by the participants were racism and bullying in schools, followed closely by discipline disparities between students of color and white students. So we were able to find that data on the state website, edsite.gov. All schools are required to report any kind of racial data to that website. And that website actually covers everything in schools, from absenteeism, teacher breakdown, discipline, testing results, academic results. It covers all statistics for our school system. So the graph that I sent along with the email that I sent to you guys on Monday showed that there was a disparity amongst the amount of suspensions and expulsions for our students of color versus their white counterpart students.
Thank you, April. And I know this information has also been shared with our Board of Education at last night's meeting.
Yes.
And I've asked, and the Social Justice Coalition has agreed, that at every meeting, they will make a report and let us know how their progress is going. And they will also be a representative at our Board of Education meetings. I want to also add, if I could, that a follow-up to the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities, they had pointed out to us that the National League of Cities will be doing some training. And indeed, I will be attending a CCM Board of Directors meeting tomorrow. And during that agenda, there will be discussion of the National League of Cities, race, equity, and leadership, a webinar that is going to be made available, at least to start with the directors of the Connecticut Conference of Municipality. And I know that from there, and their acronym is R-E-A-L, REAL, they will be helping us in terms of some of the training that we talked about a few meetings ago. So at our next meeting, I will certainly update everyone on the progress of that initiative for training of staff as well as participants in our boards and commissions. Second, I want to give an update of the Equity Coach from Sustainable CT. I am going to be meeting, her name is Elizabeth McGee. It is a free service because we are participating in Sustainable CT. And they will be working with me, Ron Malardo, Captain Ron Malardo from our police department, as well as I've asked Sharon Peters to join us in a conference call. And we will be talking about some initiatives for how we can have police as well as students' involvement. It's something that I think is important, and so does our police department. And our Board of Education is interested in learning more about how we can make some improvements in that area. I will follow up on that as well. Two other things I wanted to point out. The Selectmen received, and I can share this with our Recording Secretary tomorrow, senior and youth services update. I had asked Mary Pont to give an update of some of the programming that has occurred. I will also point out that we are starting to offer on a limited basis, rides for seniors again. During the COVID-19, since March 17, we have not been providing rides to doctor's appointments. And we feel that we can safely do so starting on the, I believe it's the 20th of this month. So Mary and Carol Ravicki are working with our seniors. And if you need more information, please call Carol at the Senior Center. She's very willing and very eager to help our seniors get appointments. The rides will be one person per van with the driver. And they'll be, as I said, on a limited basis, but we will work with folks that need rides. The next item I wanted to have under Communications and Correspondence has to do with our Portland Recreational Complex. And I've asked Ralph Zampano to report to us. Ralph?
Yep, okay. So what I have is the official memo that will go out after our meeting today that talks about the park. I will tell you that it's been, this memo's been 15 years in the making. I've been involved the entire 15 years, and Jim's been involved about half of that. So it's maybe one page, but it wasn't easy. But it's satisfying in the end. So this is what the memo has. The Portland Recreational Complex will officially open on Monday, July 20, 2020, limited to as follows. The three-quarter mile walking trail, fitness circuit, play gate, bocce court, and horseshoe pits are ready and open for use. The two soccer fields and two baseball fields are open for light usage only. For example, tee ball or kickball on the baseball fields or yoga or similar exercises on the soccer fields. Until the turf fully matures, there will be no organized sports allowed. The contractor will continue to treat the fields as necessary and will be returning in the fall to fertilize and oversee the fields as required. The turf has reached a stage where, as of July 20, light usage is acceptable. The splash pad will remain closed at this time. The controller for the splash pad, which controls the splash pad features and irrigation pump, must be programmed by the manufacturer's representative, who is based in Quebec. Due to pandemic, travel across the U.S.-Canadian border is currently restricted. We are continuing to monitor and will provide an update on the splash pad as soon as possible. Four, the concession building, which includes bathrooms, will remain closed at this time. The remaining work on the building involves final interconnection to the Portland water system, which should be completed over the next few days. In addition, we are evaluating the required cleaning guidelines under COVID-19 to open the bathrooms safely. We're all looking forward to celebrating the full opening of the park. Given the current COVID-19 restrictions, we are targeting spring 2021 for a formal grand opening. Please follow all posted safety notices and continue to follow social distancing practices. Stay safe and enjoy your new Portland recreational complex. There you go. We officially will be opening on Monday. Couple little things that obviously not, well, unfortunately, the splash pad one's a pretty significant one, but it's something that's out of our hands at the time. So at this time. So and the building really will be completed in the next few days, or probably early next week it'll be done with and out of the all set. So it'll really be down to just getting the splash pad operational. And that's really what will be left at.
Ralph, what time is it opening?
On. Well, I will tell you, we do, you know, I did create a, we walked through the park, and I created a punch list of things that have to be done before, you know, to some, you know, minor. There's nothing huge, you know, mostly minor things. And Dorita Construction will be out there on Thursday and Friday, you know, doing the final things on the punch lists as best they can. Some of them, like obviously, the splash pad is something that has to wait. But hopefully, bright and early on Monday morning, we'll be able to let the kids run, run on the playground. Adults work on the fitness circuit. And the walkers that we see all the time will officially be walking safely and within the rules of the town. So yeah, this is very, very exciting.
Congratulations to everyone, to everyone involved, Ralph and Jim and all of our Selectmen, as well as the Parks and Recreation Commission and our leaders of our Parks and Rec, Sean Dwyer, who has gone to another town, as well as Nate Foley and his staff. There's more to come. And it's certainly something that is a great addition to our community. And we're very grateful to our residents for their interest and their vote to proceed with this major improvement to our community. Are there any questions or further comments?
I had a question, Ralph. As far as the splash pad goes, is this company from Canada going to be able to come this summer? Or can the contractor, who we have the contract with, the, you know, our engineering contractor, can they find a different company? And then the other question is if, let's say, something needs to be repaired on the splash pad next year or year after, is it the Canadian company that does the repair? Or will there be a different company that's from the United States?
So to your, to the second point about the maintenance, we did actually have a meeting this week to talk about the planning with regards to maintenance on the splash pad. And there is a team in Rocky Hill that will certainly be able to go forward. There's also a team in Massachusetts, but there's a team in Rocky Hill as well that would be able to do any of the maintenance that would occur going forward with regards to the splash pad itself. On the account of trying to get this programming done, for the time being, we really have to go off of the fact that unfortunately, they're in Canada. There is other things being discussed about whether it could be done with a team on the U.S. side. And so there's nothing official for now. So for now, we gotta just wait and see. Unfortunately, it sounds like, what I'm hearing is unofficially, the board is going at least another month out till August 21st, is what I've heard. But that's nothing official. That's what I've seen in some articles. So I'm hoping we could find another solution, but we'll just, we'll just have to wait and see. But going forward, there is a team. We had discussion, a good, a very good discussion with a division of Weston Sampson to talk about it. And they can provide those services. We're waiting to get, you know, some numbers on it to see if it's really doable or, you know, is a, you know, we'll have to see what the prices are. But that was something we discussed. So.
I do, Lou, have on my desk a draft certificate of substantial completion. There's some further review. There'll be a visit by Weston and Sampson on Friday. And we'll just need to verify the things that are in this draft certificate. And I'll be signing it likely on this weekend. And I want to say thank you also to Weston and Sampson engineers and landscape designers that put this park together and are continuing to service us and work with us very closely on the implementation and all of the fine tuning that will occur over the course of the next year. Of course, all of the warranties and all of the particulars associated with the fields will be working with Weston Sampson, as well as the subcontractor in terms of the fields. And Dorita Construction, who has also been fabulous to us and with us, are doing a great job in making certain that this is a park for many generations to be proud of. And, you know, it's something that doesn't happen very often in communities. And that is taking an historic farm field and bringing it forward to a more modern usage and still maintaining some beautiful open space for our town to enjoy the outdoors, both in an active way, and there's also a passive way to enjoy that park. Just walking out onto the fields, they're just gorgeous in terms of what I remember, a couple of years ago, when we went there, it was a field that really needed a lot of special grading. There's a little bit of dust there and some weeds. Dave Kuzminsky remembers. And to stand there now, it is a field of dreams. And it's really a beautiful manifestation of a community build and a community center that I think we're all very, very proud of. So more on that, I think, as time goes. And to answer you, Mike, sunrise on the 20th. So sunrise, you can be there. Maybe I'll meet you there. We'll go for a walk around the three-quarter mile circuit.
Sounds like a plan.
Okay. Public comment?
There's no public comment at this time.
Thank you. The next item is under Old Business, something that we have on our agenda in the event a Selectman wants to make comment or have some additional input on racial equity, diversity, and inclusion. We had a very good report from April Graves, as well as some information that I was able to share. But I'll open it up to the Selectmen for any action. I think we covered it earlier. Okay, so letter B is Appointments to Boards and Commissions. Jim Tripp?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to endorse Jasmine Nunes as the resident representative on the Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. I believe she was elected by that body, and we just have to provide that endorsement.
Is there a second to Jasmine Nunes's recommendation for nomination?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ralph. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. That, I will point out, is a requirement of the Housing Authority that one of our residents be a member of the Board of Directors, which is called the Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. And Jasmine was elected by the resident. So congratulations, Jasmine. And I will sign the appropriate, there's a form that has to be signed by me. And I'll send it to Alan Harrison, who is the director of the Housing Authority, the executive director. Next item, Jim, Airline Trail Committee Appointment?
Yeah, we had an individual who has left that committee, John Schaefer. So to replace them, I'd like to make the motion that we appoint Carol Wineski. She is currently an alternate. And the motion would be to move her from an alternate to a regular position.
I'll second that as well.
Thank you, Ralph. And Lou, if you could help us, we're going to need a new alternate for the Airline Trail Committee. And I know that you're our liaison to that committee.
Right, what I'll do is I'll contact Riz, and we'll work with that, with Riz, and find out who would be that next person. And in looking forward, I just wanted to say a couple of things about John Schaefer before we vote, is that John has been a wonderful, creative member of our committee. He's had initially the vision with John Hall, bringing forward the possibility of having a trail in Portland. So I want to thank John for all his time and effort. He's moved to Cromwell, and he still said he would be willing to volunteer for things that need to be done on the trail and also attend meetings whenever there's a meeting in town that he can attend. And I just want to thank him for all the hard work that he's put forward.
I'll echo that. And thank you very much, John. We look forward to your continued participation. So with that, I'll call for a vote on Carol Wineski for a full seat on the Airline Trail Committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, thank you. Number eight, New Business Contract Award for the Primary Sludge Pump and Primary Setling Tank Mechanism Replacements. This is for the Water Pollution Control Authority. And the funding for that is the Sewer Fund. And I will read the proposed resolution dated July 15, 2020, Contract Agreement with Weston and Sampson CMR Incorporated. Resolved that the Board of Selectmen hereby authorizes for selectwoman Susan S. Bransfield to execute and deliver in the name of and on behalf of the Town of Portland a contract with Weston and Sampson CMR Incorporated, 55 Walker Brook Drive, Suite 100, Reading, Massachusetts, 01867, for the purpose of bid number 2020-08, Primary Sludge Pump and Primary Setling Tank Mechanism Replacements at the Portland Water Pollution Control Facility. The total contract amount prior to any required change orders is approximately $349,000. I'm not certain if Bob Shay was able to join us tonight. I'll look to Kevin. And I asked Bob ahead of time, I told him that we were having this on the agenda tonight. And he wanted me to remind everyone, this is part of our capital improvements, much-needed improvement to the two pumps that are about 22 years old at our sewer plant. And both pumps, while they're operating, thanks to Jim Lynch, the director of the plant, they are on their last legs. So it is very important for them to be replaced and the appropriate piping also put in place. And we have, pending your approval tonight, we will need to have the supplies purchased. And it's probably a project that will be done in the fall because there is quite a lead time for this very specialized equipment. But it is extremely necessary for our sewer plant. So is there a motion to approve this resolution?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution as presented.
Thank you, Jim. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Rick Schar, thank you. Discussion?
I'll just say, these are items that have come up in some of our discussions about things, items that are necessary for water and sewer in our subcommittee meetings. These are also items that were discussed, I think, when we have taken the tours of the plants at various times. So these are definitely necessary items.
Thank you, Jim. Anyone else? If not, I'll call for the question. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. And we will update you as progress occurs on that very important project. Refunds of excess payments. Jim?
Yes, I make a motion that we refund the amount of $136.25 to Regina T. Waltman.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ralph. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously.
I make a motion that we refund the amount of $72.35 to Lauren J. Lappin.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, thank you.
And I make a motion that we refund the amounts of $194.11 and $111.22 to Jacqueline E. Germain.
Is there a second? Seconded by Ralph. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, thank you. Are there status and committee reports tonight? Lou, did you have anything for tonight?
No, I didn't have anything at all, not tonight.
Okay, thanks. Jim?
No, I think we've covered a lot of what we would discuss tonight.
Okay. And I think that Ralph may have something from the schools.
Yeah, yeah, it'd be a good time to give an update. So as you know, I'm representing the Board of Selectmen on their reopening committee. And we've been meeting twice a week for the last few weeks. And the school administrators have been working diligently as a group, going from school to school, evaluating the situation with each school. What they did is that, and they provided the update to the Board of Ed yet last night. But right now, as it seems that they would be able to physically fit all of the students in if everyone returned to come to school, they would be able to fit them. Now, there would be some challenges of what they're doing. They're looking at, for Valley View, they're going to actually gonna rebuild, build about 155 desks, I believe, in order to separate the children because typically, there are desks that may have up to six kids at them. So as the superintendent, the new superintendent, kept reiterating over and over, we are going back to a 50s-type we are going back to a 50s type style of teaching kids this young and this, and this is not really what we want to do. But obviously in order for talking about trying to get them all back, that's what they'd have to approach. With regards to the other schools, I, I think they're, they're gonna make some adjustments that with some of the classrooms that feel their sleeve, but they'll be good. The biz, I think they're fine with that setup. The middle school is the one that actually brought the bigger challenges because some of the classes are on the larger side. So they are having to, they're talking right now about doing some reorientation of classes and possibly making use of the gym as well in some capacity if they have to. They're trying to avoid the gym, using the gym, but it's on the list if it's needed. They're still doing the analysis. And the high school has the space, but the challenges with the high school revolve around the fact that there's so much changing of classes in the high school setting. So the discussion right now is potentially maybe having less periods per day and longer periods so that the kids are really engaged in classes for a longer period rather than switching more often on more days. So that's what's being discussed. The next piece of it is probably, what we're doing right now is every member of the committee is kind of voiced their questions about the guidelines that the state put forward with reopening. And we're reviewing each of the questions. We'll probably finish up everyone else's questions and really dig into the, and delve into the teachers' questions, which are certainly the most voluminous to the, to the, the list of questions for, to be addressed. So what they need to do, the town needs to come up with the actual plan that they're gonna have in place by the 24th. They have to put it in, on the system for the state to say what their plan will be. The challenge you have, that obviously every day is a new day with these plans. The state has clearly said that they, it sounds like they plan in a month to make some grand decision about what schools are gonna do. So the challenge you have is we're obviously with the, for example, for the discussion about the desks at Valley View, you have to start that process now. You can't wait a month to say, okay, we're gonna go back. So it's amazingly, it's not a bad price. It was a strategy that Carl Johnson came up with that was really good. That all, you know, it's affordable when you think about things that, because some of the solutions in terms of building plexiglass structures, they're very expensive. So this solution comes to maybe it'll stay under $5,000 in order to build all those desks and be able to make sure you could do it at Valley View. But you can't wait to the last minute to do it. So unfortunately, you're kind of having to progress down the road knowing that maybe they're gonna tell you're on a, you're a different road when you're somewhat down it. So that is the challenge we have with all of this. So everyone's working hard. They're really working hard to figure out what they can do. And, you know, making sure safety is the key thing, you know, lots of discussions about they're making changes to the nursing facilities to make sure that kids can be icing, you know, there's isolation rooms if kids are, it turned out they may have been infected. So again, safety is critical and they're doing the best they can in terms of looking at it with safety in mind. So it's good. It's been a good, you know, it's a challenge. It's, it's, as you read every day about now, the school openings are the, at the forefront of the media all the time now. So you're reading all sorts of things everywhere about it. So it is, it is a challenge.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the selectmen?
I was just gonna add that what I thought it was the really good discussion, it was a very long meeting, very, a lot of good detailed discussion. And they got right down even to talking about, you know, the considerations of the fact that we don't have AC, you know, in a lot of the schools and the kids wearing masks. And what are you gonna do when it's 95 degrees outside? And having, putting something in place where if it's real hot, the ability to do a half day or do things of that nature. I just think that it's a tough situation. I just think it's worth commending the fact there's a lot of folks that are doing a lot of hard work and really trying to think through some issues that six months ago never would have had to been contemplated. So it was nice to see that in action last night.
Thank you, Jim. Yeah, I was able to attend for most of it on Zoom last night. Tremendous amount of work that's going on by our superintendent faculty, Sharon Peters as our Chairwoman, as well as every member of the Board of Education. It's a big job. And of course, it is extremely, extremely important. And as I think Mike Hernandez pointed out to us when, when we started our reopen committee, I think you said, Mike, we need to go very carefully. And I agree. Something we have to be extremely careful about. I will have a report. We may have a special meeting to give some more information, speaking of reopening, on terms of the library and any other department. But I will let you know as things progress. Please refer to that memo I mentioned that Janet Nocheck, our Director, shared with us. And I will, as I said, keep you informed. I had a citizen ask whether we wanted to and whether we would be discussing whether or not we'd have a charter review commission. It's something I'll, I know we have it on our follow-up items. I'll put it under Old Business for us to at least discuss if there's any interest in that. As well as I will, next time, our attorney, who did have a, a family situation where she was unable to work on the land swap and a couple of other items. She now has returned to work. And so I will be working with her on getting you a report and hopefully the resolution to pass the land swap with the exchange club. So we'll be working on that as well. Are there any other comments under general informal discussion for the selectmen? If not, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment at 8:08. Oh, excuse me. Public comment? Do we have some? Pardon me. Public comment. Thanks, Kevin.
Sorry about that. I have Janet Nocheck, who wanted to make a comment on the library status. Hold on, Janet, I'm gonna unmute you.
Thank you, Janet.
All right. Can we hear you?
Can you hear me now?
Yep, go ahead.
Good. All right. Thank you. Yeah, just wanted to update a bit. We have been working on a plan and we are being very cautious. Susan has urged me to be very careful. We have to consider all the protocols because obviously the sanitizing things that we'll have to do. We have people coming in the building now. We have been doing pretty well with our services such as curbside pickup. People are asking us to make copies for them, things like that, and deliver them up to the parking lot. So when the weather is good, that works well. So we've been doing a lot of that. We've had over 6,000 items actually were borrowed by patrons. Most of them were booked, so that, that's been good. But we hope to let some of them back in to browse and have very limited computer usage. We don't want to encourage sort of lingering. So we will probably have a lot of our chairs just, or most of the seating won't be available. Toys and things like that won't be available when we do open with the young children. Will pretty much be to come in and get their books and things. But we hope that, we think we can work it out now. We've got, the staff has been working a lot of ideas. And we still need a helping, a few more things set up. We haven't got the plexiglass for our desks yet. We have the nice new desks and we're getting some stands that Bob Shay has helped us with and Tom Robinson. So they've been doing a lot of work to help us get ready and get all the supplies that we think we need. So that's where we're at now. We, we would like to open in early August if we can. The tentative date, they are, we are still waiting for some furniture, which should be coming July 28th. I'm not sure, you know, if it will be covered up until the pandemic passes, but we will be getting some nice new things that will look very nice and make us feel homey. So things are looking good there, but that's where we're at. If you have any questions, we'll be in touch.
Thank you, Janet. Any other public comment, Kevin?
No additional public comment at this time.
Thank you. Then now I think we're ready for adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So make a motion. No. Second.
Motion made by Jim and seconded by Rick Shar. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? It's 8:11. Thank you, gentlemen. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Aye.